... I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a district commission statement. Uh, we would join to read that.
The mission of the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District is to empower students to contribute to school and community by providing substantial learning experiences in the safe, trusting, and motivating environment.
Thank you. Okay, we have the reclamation. Our district visual arts department.
Thank you. On January 20th, I received notification from the Rhode Island Alliance for Arts Education. And the letter reads, "Dear Superintendent, for the past eighteen years, the Rhode Island Alliance for Arts Education has annually recognized an outstanding school district to represent excellence in visual arts learning through the gift of art to the state of Rhode Island. The selected district provides nine student works of art that best exemplify the K-12 curriculum to become part of the permanent gift of art collection. The nine works should represent exemplary work by three students from each grade levels in district, and they will all be framed at Holland Galleries along with past district winners. They will be displayed in the Rhode Island Gift of Art exhibit area at the University of Rhode Island Providence campus. The selection of Exeter West Greenwich should come as no surprise to those of you who know our visual arts program, K-12. And just so that everyone is aware, the selection is based on the fact that K-12 students in our district experience enthusiastic, positive, and personalized learning. The arts program is part of an interdisciplinary curriculum. There are a variety of creative resources, qualified and dedicated leadership, and students explore a wide variety of activities with diverse solutions. Our arts department, Visual Arts Department, includes five members, one of whom is not with us this evening because she is teaching an art therapy class at the Autism Project. And I know from experience that if you change the schedule for children, that's not a good thing, so dedicated to her craft. But our art department is phenomenal, and we had the opportunity to recognize for the first time the entire department across the entire district, which includes Kristin Bullier. She is the K-2 art teacher who is not with us this evening, but we will recognize her separately. Also Sharon LaFreniere from MetCap, Sharon this year. We've seen her a few times this year. Our district teacher of the year as well. Amy Ray from Junior High School, and also has done some workout while room with a pretty funky schedule this year, yes? To say the least. And then at the high school, Nicole Bichette, and the department chair, Elizabeth Liff. So we actually wanted to take this opportunity to have a public recognition, give you an opportunity to recognize the contributions that they make to our school and to our students every day. We have something that we will present. And also on May 19th, there is a formal ceremony that will be held at the URI campus when the works of art will be dedicated and displayed, and they stay there. So it's a pretty incredible honor for Exeter West Greenwich, where a very small school system, but we pack a big punch. So thank you to our art teachers, and I would like each of you to come up so that I can present to this something. And then I know that Mrs. Lind wanted to say a few words as well. Okay?
If you ladies can all come this way, I want to shake your hands and congratulate you real quick. Okay, thank you.
Your time is, so I just want to point out a few little things. Amy Ray is the single happiest woman in the school district now that she's junior high full-time. I just wanted to mention that. We are also all artists, and I think that enthusiasm all comes through. And Amy is now doing the South County Hop Arts. She's a visual artist doing that. Sharon is also the Rhode Island Art Education Association Rhode Island Elementary Art Teacher over here, which is huge. So that's pretty remarkable. Our little widdy Nicole, the little one, somehow gets us all out to Italy and that. And if you've ever seen when all the Italians come and, you know, and the whole school is "Chao" and "Bruthe" and all that, how she does that, I never know. But she also exhibited at Moses Brown Art Education Exhibition. And then Kristin, wonderful Kristin, is so involved with the autism project. So I just wanted to mention that as well. Thank you very, very much from all of us. You love me.
Thank you.
Can I go ahead and say anything real quick? I'm amazed by our art department. That's amazing. These two guys rock. They're just awesome. Your enthusiasm for our kids and just your own personal talents are amazing.
Thank you.
Well, my son, who, you know, he's been around a lot, but he made a turtle sculpture of, I don't know if you've ever seen that before. But it's always there. It's always there on our table Thanksgiving, because he's a waste of Philadelphia now. So we always put the turtle in his seat. So if you're going to get my son, they are interested for at least a little bit.
I don't say this out loud, but I want to thank all of you for extremely proud. You guys are all fabulous. I want to thank you for inspiring our kids every day. And you know who's inspiring the kids who are receiving that? You inspire all of their students. So children who, you know, maybe think they could draw or have an interest, would have interest, they produce amazing products. Whenever you come here, art displays. I'm always really taken back by how many children we have with talent and who can draw, who can make a drop. So I want to make you guys, again, inspire our kids all the time. You make the classes fun. The kids love coming to your classes. And I know personally, my son can't wait for senior board next year, and it just started. Women just love to wait here. So you guys are looking forward to it. So thank you so much for everything you do, and you guys all go beyond, which is fabulous.
Thank you.
Open forum. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak on something not on the agenda, you need to go now. Okay, our consent agenda.
Consent agenda includes the approval of minutes from the regular meeting and on January 26th, and then the budget workshop and special meeting minutes of January 27th. So they were really two separate meetings that occurred in the same evening. There are no personnel items. The only other item is the monthly bills.
Any questions for any of you?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, there's force power, there's a discipline of work, the highest sign of leadership, new ladder, general assembly, eligibility of interest to general assembly, and our charter changes. Any questions, maybe those? With 1516 budget projection?
Okay, so, um... There were no changes to the revenue, and there were minor changes on the expense side. I was really hoping, you know, that we would have had a final audit number completed because I sensed that that was going to change, given the amount of restatement that we had to do because of the Gatsby 68 instituting that this year. I can report that in next month's projection that the cumulative fund balance instead of the 998,665 is 1.2 million. So that was an increase. And when you get the audit, which is going to be submitted to the auditor general tomorrow, yesterday, or yesterday and Friday were considered non-workdays by the auditor general, so we have until tomorrow to submit, and it's complete. But when you see the lift that was done in the reporting as due from Gatsby 68, it's going to be impressive. It's a little mind-numbing. We're still kind of working through the order, but it's the first time where community schools, districts, and municipalities are reporting all fund balances, all fund balances, regardless of whether you have control of them or they're out in the world somewhere. And then all pension liability, post-employment liability, and the numbers are staggering. So when you see the audit report, you kind of go like, "Ah!" But it's paper, you know? But it is, it's been something they've been talking about for over a, over a year, letting us know that it's coming. But again, we did a lottery statement, and it's, it's just a way of handling the accounting. So the good news is, we now have a 1.2 million dollar balance, so that's it. So that's it.
Thank you. Okay, 16, 17 working draft budget.
I know we have a presentation on Thursday, but I figured before Thursday, when we're with the members of the town councils from Exeter and West Greenwich, that I would share with you this spreadsheet and the implications of this draft budget, just so that you can take a look at what the impact is on the towns. And I have a hard copy as well. I won't go through it in as great a level of detail as I will on Thursday, because you've seen this report a number of times, but I just want to point out a couple of things so you're aware prior to my Thursday meeting. Okay? I just want you to have a copy. Basically, I provide information from the past two years, and now I focus on 1516 initially. And this, again, is no surprise. The town approval budget was $30,699,252. This, this column represents everything that was approved, so line by line in terms of revenues and expenditure, what was approved. And then, as we know, in the governor's first year, she held off on releasing her final numbers until really late, and it was after the all-day referendum. And at that point, we realized that we took a pretty significant hit in, for example, regional transportation, $200-plus thousand, $28,000 in public transportation offset. So we've been scrambling, but in order to keep the budget balanced, because you can't have a budget that has an approved amount and not enough revenue to cover, and we had already had the taxpayers vote on what they were contributing. So we just filled in with surplus money, the difference. So basically, you can see it went from $200,000 budgeted from surplus to 443,672. So we got hit in addition of $243,000, $244,000 in added cuts after the all-day referendum based on the late submission of the governor's budget last year. And throughout the course of this school year, starting in the summer, I was reporting on some savings and some things that have kind of decreased that exposure. And according to the report that Mr. Ross just read, we're down to about E2,000 change exposure from the 244. So even though I included that number, it doesn't mean that we drew that much from the reserves, but we actually had to draw the 200 plus the E2,000 that we're projecting as a shortfall. But that shortfall is not based on over-budgeting, it's based on under-revenues from what was projected. Does that make sense? Okay. So what I did, the next column is what we are proposing, and it's no secret, because I've already said it, that we are proposing a zero increase. And that is, everything is included in the budget. We had some savings that we experienced, that's how we went from the 443,672 exposure down to the 282 exposure. Some of those savings carry into the next year. We had some tuitions that we no longer need the budget because kids are graduating and they just tend out of district placements. We have a reduction in the number of children who will be attending career technical schools. So all of those items together produce a good amount of savings, and those savings were offset by some projected increases, like for example, the full cost of the school resource officer, which is no longer supported by the grant. In total, we were able to get the budget to a zero increase in overall operating budget, which is the best we can do, given maintenance level. The governor's numbers are in, and what's happened is, last year, we received $5,642,766 minus the $255,000 because of funding formula every year for eight years, we're seeing a reduction. So if I take this minus this, it is our beginning value for state aid for this year, and then we have to build in the $221,000 change reduction from the next year of funding formula. So that is automatically a decrease that we need to contend with. In addition to that, we know that we closed the group home. We didn't close a group home. The state closed a group home. And regardless of the level of service at those group homes, money is given to each district that has a group home in its area. We happen to have two, one in Exeter and one in West Greenwich. We were receiving on an equal basis around $250,000 to $260,000 based on the number of beds at Arcadia and the Exeter house. Arcadia has closed. As a result, we are not receiving money for those beds. We've gone from $252,000 in revenue to $101,000 change in revenue. That's another $151,000 reduction in revenue on top of the $221 from the impact of the funding. We've also experienced an increase in high-cost special ed that was part of the governor's budget, so no surprise there. The ELL, English Language Learner Categorico, if you've been listening to the governor's report, districts are getting some increased funding for that, but based on our diverse community, we got $727. Regional transportation has been an area that's been the biggest issue for us. We were projecting an increase every year over time until we reached full funding. That was the promise. Last year, we were not only level funded, but reduced. We had received $583,000 the previous year, reduced to $514,000. So we're projecting an increase. We were supposed to get this. We actually got this. It's not even level funded again. We lost $113,000. 14, 13,000. A slightly increase in non-public transportation of $6,000. We brought our available from surplus back to where it should be, although it is not a good practice for us to continue to pull from surplus of the balance in budget. That money is what we anticipate using for capital projects. And the more we put into the budget to balance, the less we have for capital. And of course, the challenge there is if we have capital projects and we don't have reserves to pull from, the only alternative is to put it on the ballot as an additional request from taxpayers. So no matter what strategy we use, there's an impact on the taxpayer. The Medicaid, that is a reliable figure for revenue from Medicaid, and then we've been budgeting $327 in miscellaneous revenue, which includes things like preschool tuition and so forth. So altogether, what that means, remember, the bottom line is the same. Last year, the two times combined for $23,255,694 in taxpayer record. This year, it would require $23,810,000 for the same budget because of all the reductions. Now, if you can imagine this number increasing, that only would increase this figure here, which is already significantly higher, even though we're requesting zero as an increase. We've offset that because each year, we have bond payments. Last year, we were $733,000. We subtract 30 because we have the debt service fund that there is zeroing out as we move to the end of that bond that expires after next fiscal year. That has gone down a little bit, so the bond, the debt service exposure is $682,141 compared to last year's $73,000. In addition to that, last year, the share, population share was 46.62% of the students were from Exeter, 53.38% from West Greenwich. The trend has been moving towards 50/50. It is a significant change. We've gone from 53.38% of the students from West Greenwich to 51.98%, and from 46.62% from Exeter to 48.32%. So it's 1.3, 1.4% of a change, and when you are working off a budget, that's a million, this 1.4% is a lot of money. So what I did, and so basically, this is what it looks like at this point in time. A big increase to Exeter and a slight decrease to West Greenwich, and that is because the population change is offset by the need for additional funds. Just so that the committee understands, I did a couple of columns so that you could see if everything stayed exactly the same, meaning I took the 1516 budget and just copied everything. If everything remained constant, there was no change at all, and the amount that we were expecting from the 2016 was the same as what we expected in the 1516 school year, which we know it's not, but let's just presume everything remained constant. Based on the population shift alone, which we have no control over, that's, that's a formula that is outlined in the charter, it would cost Exeter $329,269 extra dollars just for the population shift, which means if Exeter has to kick in an extra $329,000, West Greenwich has the savings of $329,000. On top of that, the next column, I maintained the population shift, but added in the fact that they closed the group home, and you lost $151,000 in revenue from that. And as a result, so just population in group home costs Exeter $401,864, and West Greenwich would now see $250,000 savings as opposed to $249,000. So it costs both towns. The rest of the increase, so from the 401 to the 584, is based on other reductions, the funding formula reduction offset by the slight increases that we had in different areas. But just so that you can see the major areas that have impacted us. A couple of notes. The governor's budget is not final. As you know, we had a meeting scheduled last night at the State House that was canceled. It has been rescheduled and confirmed for February 29th. That is a meeting of the four regional districts, school districts. We invited the town councils. We have representation from both Exeter and West Greenwich that are attending, along with Crystal Warren, Charro, that's Charleston, Richmond, and Hopton, and Foster Gloucester. And we've invited legislators that represent all of those nine towns, and we are speaking about the aid to regional districts. Two focus points, the first being regional, the regional incentive, and the second one being the promise of increased aid for regional transportation, which I explained, we kind of not had the promise yet for us. We do have some, quite a bit of interest among our legislators, and this is a time for us to fan together and make a plea for the promises that are made for us. If any changes result from that meeting, that will increase our revenue, because I certainly can't see them going backwards from where we are, but it would increase our revenue, which then would not increase our budget, it would decrease the exposure to the towns. So that is an event that we really want to pay attention to. I've also shared with you that there is a bill that was presented to the House by Senator Belik, and Senator Morgan was part of that as well, and that bill is addressing the regional incentive, so looking to reinstate that regional incentive. That would bring money in, which would not increase our budget, but decrease the exposure to the towns. And I also want to tell you that on February 29th as well, in the morning, I will be part of a group from the Rhode Island School Superintendent's Association, who will be meeting with members of the House and Senate to have a discussion about the responsibility of communities for DCYF places. That is significant for us because the group home aid that I talked about is based on beds. That's it. It is not based on level of service. Exeter happens to be the home of a group home that has students with significant levels of educational need. That, that facility is over a $30,000 address for us, because the children end up in out-of-district placements, and the tuition, and the transportation, 1-on-1 aides, and 1-on-1 nurses, and all the things that they need and that they deserve. But the burden is completely on the district where the group home is placed, not to the district where the kids are coming from. DCYF places them in a group home. Once they're there, 100% of the responsibility goes to us. So what happened is, the group home that housed our students that all came to our schools, just were integrated into... just were integrated into our schools, took our buses, had our teachers, is now being closed. And the group home with the really, really expensive needs is the one that stays open. The level of need has no impact on the house, on the aid that we get for group homes. So there is quite a bit of interest to really look at the way that responsibility is currently not shared. Imagine group homes, and there are several. Several with much larger budgets than we have. So we're a small district with relatively small budget and a huge expense that not every district has. And then even the districts that do have group homes do not have group homes with the level of need that we have. So there's a lot of inequities in responsibility. Not that we're looking to not, you know, take care of our own share, but it's inequitable at this point. So there is interest among legislators to introduce some bills that want to influence the way that funding for the students that are placed by DCYF is where that responsibility lies. That could also have an impact. Again, it would perhaps decrease some of our expenses. And if that were the case, if we were no longer responsible for some of the costs associated with that group home, then we could actually reduce our overall request because there is significant... Let's say they said tuition was not the responsibility of the district. And this is an optimistic wish. But if tuition were not a responsibility of the district, we could probably cut $700,000 in expenses for students that did not originate from either Exeter or West Greenwich. They came from other places to reside here based on a DCYF placement. That would reduce our operating budget, which would in turn impact the town applications. So all three of those events are significant. This is not the final budget. I hope, I hope that at least one out of three will have an impact for us. But as it stands right now, this is a significant figure. And it's based on a zero increase budget. Unfortunately, we have a lot of things kind of working against us outside of the population shift. So that's where we stand. This will be an interesting discussion on Thursday with our council members, but I wanted you to have access to the information that's at stake.
The tax gap. And does the shift in the population, does that still, does that fall under that tax cap?
So the district has always adhered to the max that the towns can raise currently. But it's really a town issue. So I don't know what your, what your agreement from last year is or what your agreement is for this year to raise that revenue.
No, there's a state law that says that taxes cannot go above the excess of X or Y.
Right.
Or something.
Correct.
I have a funny feeling, because I just ran it over. We have a little bit of a problem. Thinking we have $100,000 off years before. If it's, if it's 4%, we have $100,000 or $1,000,000. 4%. So then, so and if the shift in population isn't covered by that, I mean, our budget's not going up. I understand that because of the shift in population, you're looking at $150,000 more than the taxes can go up in Exeter by that state law. And that doesn't leave anything for the town.
Does the state law refer to the increase in the operating budget? Or does it, does it pertain to the increase that a town gets in charge? I haven't read, I haven't read it.
That's, that's what I don't know.
Yeah, that's a question.
Right.
That was a question.
So if...
They cannot raise their taxes for their, for their town.
Right.
They have a whole, any...
For their tax, for their town. They can't raise it more than 4% for the taxpayers of the town. Of their budget, of the town budget.
Right. Without that, no problem.
And so when you look... So when you look at the $401,000 or, I don't see, the $584,000, what does that dollar value represent?
To Exeter.
The entries over there, taxes.
You don't have to talk to the Exeter budget. Not just, not just our portion. Not just our portion, it's within the Exeter budget. Exeter, but their overall budget, their overall budget, it would focus on. This is the school portion. So why do you differ?
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Cancel my question. I'm assuming they'll love that, that information.
Does it present an interesting dilemma? If, for example, the population shift alone changed the tax burden by more than 4%? How do you handle that? That's what I mean.
So the, so the experience with the district has been, it is, I've got a law in front of me here, but I've done it a couple of times over my years here. And this, this, it's the town asking the district, and it's under section two, in three, in four. It asks for justification for why you exceed. And certainly, I think the presentation tag shows that the jeopardy of some of these... If we're supposed to be the fiduciaries of the funds, then give us all the very control of the variables. But we don't control the variables.
No, I, I...
You know, I think that helps with the argument, I think that helps with the argument with the legislative group.
Well, I understand that, and I understand what the charter says. And I know that this has been discussed along that path through several charter review committees as to, you know, getting back to that 50/50. And there's no desire on either side, or there wasn't a desire on either side two times prior to do that. And as we get closer to that, it might be to our benefit to start considering it. And I do also understand that it's the total pound of budget. And running a number, again, based upon something that I heard, it's going to be close. I, we have, like you said, it's one, we have that meeting Thursday night. I'm sure we may find out.
And then we need to, of course, pay attention to those important events that are happening. Hopefully, we'll see a change in... Any one of them would be significant enough to change our problem.
Correct.
But so for the record, people have said, why are you not asking for any money? But we knew this was coming. So we're having a conversation about whether or not we already exceed the tax cap with a request of zero. I mean, it doesn't even seem reasonable, but that's, that's where we are.
Well, yeah, and it has, it has nothing to do with our budget number.
Correct.
As it has to do with the state pulling back funding, which, that's a state liability. That's not really our liability.
And our charter in terms of charteration is the population shift.
Correct. Might create some trouble, based upon the way the laws are.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, monthly subcommittee report. Policy update. Final, final one page now.
Yeah, no, there, there is a second page, but most of the second page is already... No, I think there's a few on the second page. But the ones that are in green are the ones that are in the hopper, so to speak. So we had a policies subcommittee meeting scheduled on Monday that was snowed out. We've rescheduled that for Tuesday, the next Tuesday or vacation week. And quite a few of these will be ready for school committee review at the next meeting. We have several others that are out being reviewed, some that require re-review. So Andrew has been looking over some of those. But we are moving through these policies at a rate where we would expect to finish by the end of the school year. So our entire agenda will be updated by then.
Um, is that the fourth? Talking about retest results.
Yeah, so... So the small water system tested. The, so this is kind of, this is annual testing. It's ongoing testing that we do. The testing in question was taken on 8/27. It was completed on 9/8, and it was returned to the district some point after 9/8. And the, I'm looking at the line on report. And this was in the teacher's bathroom. And it had a result of high lead levels, articulate, .015 is the acceptable level. This was .019, so .004 over. A month later, on 9/22 collection. So now we are aware that there is this high level or this hit. A re-sample is taken, and that was taken on 9/22. The completed date of the testing was 10/8. And we received it at some point after 10/8, but during the month of October. And the level that was .019 is now .005, which is well within the limits. So all the testing, subsequent testing is tested below the level, so we can drink a walk.
Okay.
Okay.
Bottom line.
Is that the bottom line, or I can stop right there?
Well, I, no, I, I just, I read everything in the report. I just wanted to know the specifics.
And the thing that goes on now is just, once you have that hit, you have to post for a period of time regardless of all subsequent events. The subsequent, or subsequent testing, the subsequent testing continues until 6/2016. So we just keep doing it, and it's, it's fine. But it was a...
That's applesauce, right?
That was a line in it, at, at... Metcalf. So junicin is fine, bolo is fine. We are taking other steps, you know, to say, okay, there are inline systems that you can use to kind of monitor pH. And basically, what we suspect might have happened is if the systems aren't used in the... So the water in the pipes stay there for, let's say, weekend. And you do first draw. So first draw, which you don't get to run, you get it right out of pipe. They have inline systems. We have them in some of the, in some of, in all of the systems. Some are working better than others. But what they do is if the water doesn't cycle, they will automatically cycle. And that way, we don't get that kind of standing water. And that's what we're evaluating out. And next Wednesday, the engineer who put the systems in is coming in to review everything. So, you know, I'm pretty confident it's, it's, we're fine. But again, it's, you know, it's a hot...
Just out of curiosity, because we're a developer, right? So where's the lead coming from? I mean, it's not like we've got, not like a city system where you've got buried lead pipes in the ground that the water transfers through and, you know, just put the lead in water. And this building was built at a time when certainly most of the lead was out of the sot. You know, where's it coming from?
Could just be natural. I, I, it could be, you know, some of the plumbing is still old, you know, with like a line that's still...
A line would be the one that I would beat.
Metcalf still has some older plumbing in there, you know, as you get in, like, you know, all the plumbing in, in Lineum, that's in cement slab. So that was put in there in the 50s, same.
And that, and that would have, that would have upper plating of lead, you know, lead-based sot putting. It's still less minimal.
It did, yeah. We're talking...
Yeah, small models, I understand that. But I also, my concern is this, you know, especially given what's going on now, flink. You know, that's my, my big, I understand it's minimal, but it exceeds the, you know, the guideline. As soon as you exceed the guideline, you know, everybody's helping. I'm curious as to where it's coming from. I mean, if the engineers designing systems are coming now, you might want to ask them that question.
Yeah.
Where, where's, where's, where do they source it?
That was, caused a little stir. I said it caused a little stir, but we got it under control, you know. We do the right things and, and, you know, it's, as I spoke to one of the administrators and one of the others, I said, no, this is, these are federal, you know, compliance and state compliance protocols. There's no, we don't have to do what they said in that's. And, and they don't, they don't want you reposting the high level. I mean, the low level that the subsequent tests are, okay, that's not the protocol. Well, say you have a hit, you, you know, propose that you have a hit. Well, how can we handle that's not part of the protocol?
Everybody else have a statement?
No, I have one question. Um, on the curriculum report, under the social studies, you know, so that these are... The curriculum architecture meeting, does that mean that it's like a line meeting? Or are they moving towards having social studies as a graded course at Metcalf?
So I will tell you that our curriculum director stuff at Martha's Day did right now. However, the, the conversation has been about making sure that social studies instruction is occurring in some of the grades that has had, that have had less social studies instruction and desire. And, you know, we only have a certain number of minutes in a day to work with. So there's been some good conversation about how literacy and social studies can be intertwined. How, you know, you can, you can teach a lot of things through social studies and through science. That's really been the conversation. And there's quite a bit of support for us to move in that direction. And that's what Dr. Hearn has been meeting with representatives from grade five, six, and also the junior high school to begin. and also the junior high school to begin that conversation and really expand the opportunity for kids to explore social studies topics in their elementary grades.
Okay. Okay, uh, to business, we have policy, we can, elementary school dismissal discussion. I think there's notes in front of the master with the, with the issues I want to talk about a little bit. And Michelle, I was now to have to be at any question.
So this was a topic that was brought to the school committee, um, based on an incident that occurred at Wallowun School Week. And, um, I have had some follow-up discussions with the principal at Wallowun and, um, and shared some of the, some of the concerns, some of the recommendations. We also took a look at the policy, the current policy as it exists and, um, really talked about whether any of the, any of the specifics of the incident that occurred could one hundred percent be avoided. That's really what the focus of our conversation was during the policy subcommittee meeting. The, the end result is that we really just wanted to open up the dialogue for the school committee, um, and, and I've provided you with a summary of the discussion points. Um, we know that in each of our elementary buildings, we have a policy that exists already, um, and that policy is attached. In each of the buildings, they have a developed dismissal policy and the most recent updates to that policy had to do with parent sign-out, you know, making sure that, that we had the right identification and so forth. But we have also historically allowed parents to make requests to allow their child to travel home on a different bus. And our bus company has been supportive of that initiative. One of the requests that you have in front of you from, um, from one of the parents, Mrs. Powers is in the audience, is to not allow children to ride home on a bus other than the designated bus. And so you know, if that change is made, then there'll be a whole other segment of the population that will have some things to say about not liking the inflexibility. So we have to consider all the different perspectives. Ultimately, the, the decision around whether or not that is or is not allowed is the school committee's decision because you write policy. Um, Mrs. Marino has indicated that she believes not allowing flexibility would make things easier, easier to supervise at Wallowun. Um, but she also confirms that it would not guarantee that a step is similar that would not occur. She also reports that, um, there are some alternatives for children who, there have been some, some issues with, and by issue, I just mean that, you know, an incident occurred where the child got on the wrong bus. And there's a lot of reasons why that might happen despite the level of supervision that is at the school. Um, but they have an alternate location that is available for all students where there is someone who will kind of do, kind of escort the child to the bus. And then any children that have, um, special education needs or five oh four plan, there can be accommodations made through their documented plan if special combinations or modifications are necessary for dismissal procedures. So we have a lot of different routes that we can take. Um, I've provided you with the discussion points based on the conversation that has occurred at Wallowun. Um, the policy is about elementary school dismissal. Uh, Mrs. Marino has dueling events this evening with her daughter and her son. And Mrs. Rattigan, who was here already for the, our presentation, um, can, can answer questions about the dismissal policy at MetCap, but I will tell you that it's similar. I mean, there's a pretty strong dismissal process in place and any changes to the policy unless you directly specify once, they relate to both. So, um, that's what we see.
Well, just as a parent, having children, my kids go on other people's buses and other children come home. My kids, a lot of times it was for gym and athletics and I was going to drive all the kids to gym and athletics and they came home on the bus and just like to get off the seats directly. And then we'd whip off the, the, so it just made it easier for the kids to get there. So I just really would be very opposed for basketball or whatever, I would be opposed to not let children be able to ride on the bus. Now, I could be a student. You know, it's law of the property, which is, you know, in our private.
And I would say in the particular incident that was brought to your attention, um, it happened, a child got on the incorrect bus. Nobody is denying that it happened. The good news is we know that the child got on a bus and was safe the whole time. Um, however, I, I refer to it as the perfect storm of circumstances because on that particular day, the bus driver was a substitute driver. And there, there isn't a way that that bus driver would have ever known whether a child getting on the bus belonged there or didn't belong there. So immediately, there was a report that was filed and I know Bob took the lead on this, but communicated with our bus company about the incident, what went wrong, what is policy, how do we prevent that from happening again? So that report is on file and discussions have happened with, uh, the bus company have been very responsive. Um, in, in addition to that, I know the principal has met with the supervisory aides that do the supervision at the end of the school day. And again, on a day when they're absent, unless it's a substitute that is there regularly, it's possible that that individual may not know what table kids are supposed to be at. So, um, it's, it's hard. It's, it's easy to make sure that they all get onto transportation that is safe. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the kids get on the right bus all the time. Sometimes this can occur. I'm open to anything. I do not feel strongly one way or the other, but I worry that whatever change we make, if we make a change, we cannot send the message that it's a hundred percent foolproof because I don't believe that it is.
And as a parent, I share your concern. When my son was young, they would come on the wrong bus for the camp. So I understand that fear and the absolute terror. I, I get that. Um, I have, I've had three kids in the system too, and they go on to friends' houses for various reasons when I wasn't able to get them and I'm in the weeds. I would hate to take that opportunity away, especially in this district, which is so large that they can't just walk to someone's house, which is not always available to them. I think the safeguards that are going to put in place and that are in place are the most high, the best guarantee you can have that this would never happen again. I, I understand your fear, but I just don't want to take it, the opportunity away everyone when neither way is guaranteed.
Beginning of the year, don't the Wallowun students go attack them? But it's only for the first couple of weeks of school? Is that correct? I'm not sure.
Not exactly sure of the timeframe, but it is a period of time.
So it's not, it's a little one somewhere at all? They don't, I don't know, I was just thinking on a substitute driver, you know, they're driving bus four and you see a kid come on bus six on, on his neck and then it's like, but it's only for a small window beginning of the year.
And then the bus drivers know the kids.
Thank you. They know.
There are times when, when a different child gets on the bus. And so the protocol would be the bus driver or the aide that drives the bus, which was not the normal aide on this particular day in question either, but would see a different child and if they don't already have notification from the bus company that this is, on this date, this child is riding the bus to this stop, we have permission, school has been contacted, you know, there's a protocol. If they didn't have that information, then they, they call the station, they call the school, you make sure that all documentation is in place before you read it didn't happen on that particular day.
I'm surprised the kids didn't say anything because the kids usually say, hey. The, the no exceptions. I know a couple of times I've utilized it when I've had a meeting at work and I've had no options, but just send them on with something else. But, but I do understand Michelle's concerns. I think it's tough to have a no exception.
Were there really tweaks to the system, uh, at least a way of raising the awareness that situations can, we tend to get a little places sometimes because it doesn't happen that often. So, you know, anything that can be said or done or judicial, I don't want to say training, but at least kind of awareness at least at MetCap of, hey, you know, I've really got to, you know, buckle down here and make sure that, you know, this, this doesn't happen again. So, and kind of correspondence there into that.
Do you mean to parents asking them to really utilize this in a very limited fashion or do you mean?
No, for the actual folks who actually need to put the on the bus or the bus company themselves or, you know, raise that level.
Yep, so we have, um, we try to do monthly meetings with our TAs to go over protocols, especially because we have five or six new TAs this year. So it was very important to not only train them in what our policy was, but to revisit that. And as situations have come up over the course of the year that have kind of made us stop, pause and say, hmm, you know, this could have happened, this might have gone wrong or, or this, you know, was confusing even, um, for a few minutes, we've gone back and revisited and tried to tighten things up here and there. Um, but I do think one thing that could help is just making the parents aware that you really do, um, we would really prefer that this be very limited situations. Um, that always helps. On the flip side of that, if any of you have been at MetCap at dismissal time, you see the long line of pickups. So it's very difficult for parent, for parents to get from MetCap to Wallowun and they need to do, you know, pick up multiple children. So I do know some, some parents really depend on being able to coordinate, uh, bus ride home to then go to gymnastics or, or whatever the event is on occasion, um, to help with that because the district is so large and things start, you know, pretty closely to the end of our day. So, um, so we do revisit it, um, but I think one of the things we can do is, you know, repeat to parents that really, you know, on a limited basis, so it doesn't get out of hand. Um, I don't feel that it has at MetCap, um, besides those situations for, for childcare or transportation issues like you were talking about Cheryl, you know, somebody get caught in the, um, but yes, we have the regular meetings with our TAs and we brainstorm ideas to keep everybody safe.
And I also, I mean, I don't want to take this away from, you know, that, that is a, as an option for parents because I'm like, we also want to, and I do too. Um, I also want to make sure that, you know, there's some kind of confidence level that's raised here. That's, okay, we've learned from this, okay, so we got to do something here just to make sure, you know, never do enough to make sure that kids are safe and told and we are this most of anything.
And I will tell you that Mrs. Marino has had similar conversations with the staff at Wallowun in response to this particular event as well. And we have, in the event of an absence, um, we have pretty constant subs now that sign up for the Wallowun job. So they, they've been there enough where even our subs recognize the kids and where they belong.
Can I talk yet?
Yeah. So even, um, at policy sub we discussed, even if we took away the flexibility, could this still happen? Um, and given the perfect storm, which happened in this case, it could. So like at Wallowun, they sit at tables, so if you have a sub there, a sub on the bus and there was no one allowed to want to go to the bus, the person could turn around for a minute, the child go from table three to table four, get on bus eight instead of bus twenty, and it could still happen. So that's why we, that's what we discussed, you know, it could still happen, even if we take away the flexibility. And, um, and I imagine possibly the same thing, the flexibility is important to parents for, for reasons that Diane mentioned and, and every bills. And even at MetCap, maybe to MetCap level, the kids have these projects. Um, that was a big thing. I don't find kids who have projects, kids come home on your bus and work on a project together. So because it could still happen, taking away the flexibility didn't make much sense to me. Okay, I just tell, you have to go ahead, Terry.
Your discussions with the bus event, um, did they say anything in terms of, you know, the general having the best for substitute drivers to refer to?
They have, so the manifest would be standard ridership. What they're looking for with non-standard is the issue of, um, manager Scott or Laura issue based on, um, information received from the school, the chip that identifies the student name and what school and the buses. And that goes in the driver's, um, on their clipboard in there in each vehicle. So that's how they're keeping, and it's, it's, it's really basic. If you can picture a, um, you know, a note from, you know, uh, the secretary, you know, someone called, that's it, you know, Wallowun plus, you know, Bob Ross, uh, plus ten, and that's really it, and that goes on.
So for a substitute driver who doesn't have the recognition of the normal ridership, um, they've never, with the exception of presenting a slip of paper, they really haven't the recognition of who belongs. Did they, they address that at all?
I think they were waiting, you know, to kind of see where all of this comes out as there going to be a system change. I think, you know, what keeps going through my head and I'm looking at the policy and I've looked at it over the course of this whole day, and really the policy is solid. There is flexibility within the policy of the internal procedure of how they each build and handle it. I think that's really where the tweaking comes on. So I think under, um, I forget what it is. Three, school administrators may issue coded identification cards if they have identification of parents who are approved of those. So that kind of thing is constantly being looked at. Okay, the kids pull the tag off, so that's not going to work. Okay, put the card on. No, we don't want the card because we don't want people, you know, and they're just constantly looking at those. And I think that's where it got to. Here's, here's the driver with his manifest and here's the student or the monitor who's supposed to say, you know, Bob Ross plus eight, and they look, oh, good. Remember, that's what was missing with the sub kind of people.
In the event of the bus driver being absent, there is an A, that's a plus, that's what. So in order for there to be no recognition, it would require both individuals to be out sick on the same day, which could happen, but the chances of that are way smaller than the chances of one of them being.
The, the two procedures that you see on that, on the sheet two of what they have in place, um, I think is a good, a good catch-all. So if a child, if they don't know, if they do know a child has a tendency to want to go home with another child or they, um, they change tables, um, there is a meeting place at Wallowun where those kids go and they are escorted on the bus. Talk to Melissa about this. And then, um, again, the, if a child has an ID or, um, it can be placed in that and they can be escorted on the bus.
escorted on the bus. And some of those are, I think, good catch-alls.
And then, just to point out at the bottom of the news page, completely separate, but another request came to us from a different.
Before we do that, can we, you know, can we just?
Yeah. And I'm just, we're not to get into the details, but just to point out that there are different perspectives. So the other request that is on here for you to look at, ask for increased flexibility. So no matter what happens, somebody or some members of the parent community will not be completely satisfied with that.
Absolutely. Michelle, go ahead. My side of the knowledge, you have some ideas?
Um, I did. Okay, yeah. Now, it was my child. I remember, this happened on November nineteenth, by the way, and I requested an emergency meeting. I said, can we do this now, now, now? And everybody said, no, 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 which I later found out you can do that. So I should have done that, but I didn't put my foot down. So what happened on November nineteenth was, my son, who's in second grade, just so you all know what happened, okay? He is a collaborative student, he has an IEP. Nowhere ever in my whole human education experience has he ever gone to a special place aside of everybody else to get on his bus. Never. They go to the cafeteria, they go to tables that have their buses, and I've seen the place, and I've seen Metcalf, and it's complete chaos. And apparently, he got it in his mind that he was going to go over to a friend's house. And of course, he wasn't. I didn't have a note, I didn't call the bus company, none of that was in place. Mrs. Corcoran didn't know. So he told whoever was the teacher or the person in charge, oh yeah, I'm going over such and such's house. And she said, okay, and put him on the bus. Now, my, my child has some limitations, and he has some issues, okay, with how he approaches other people and things that he makes up his mind. He can't conceive of anything outside his own little timeframe. He doesn't know what the future means, he doesn't know what two weeks ago means. So maybe I had a conversation with that two weeks ago, but getting off the point. It was that day, and he got on that bus, and, and they just let him get on. And, and I didn't find out, I tried to call, I got a call from another parent who happened to see it happen. I didn't get a call from a teacher, I didn't get a call from a Sabrina, I didn't get a call from anybody. And it's a good thing that I was home, because I would have been an hour away if I was at work. And I, I was just like, because he has no fear, and he has no concept of danger whatsoever, you know, he'll approach anybody, it scares me every single day that I send him to that school. This is the kind of thing I had nightmares about before, and now here it is happening. Okay, so, you know, I understand everybody's concern with the flexibility, you know, around your old schedule. I work, my husband works, you know, I had to pay childcare up to a certain point, tell my kids we're old enough to babysit their little, their little brothers and sisters, I have four. And I have kids in every school system, so I've seen how it operates in every single school. And I, I just, there are other school systems that prohibit kids from going on anybody else's bus. And on the flip side of that, I've had to, by request of different school things that were going on, that I had to rearrange my schedule to get my kid in a certain time for a certain activity, because there was no bus to take him home. So I ask you guys, what's more important? Your flexibility with, oh, I gotta get to this meeting, oh, I gotta get to that yoga class, oh, I have an hair appointment, or your kid getting on the wrong bus once, just once? And maybe he's seven, and maybe he's autistic. You know, in the world where we have terrorists, this kind of activity going on all over the world, some of it's infiltrated into just the next state over a few years ago, I just can't see how any of you guys are lackadaisical about not making this priority. I, I don't, I, I just disagree with all the comments about flexibility. You make a rule, people, oh, Chris, you know, they'll moan about it for a couple of years, and then they'll get used to it, just like every other rule that has this much impact. And if it has this much impact, then the thing about having very, very few incidents of it happening isn't happening. Everybody seemed to have done this at one point or, or on a regular basis. So, you know, that's not a valid point, that it, that it can only happen in, you know, small amounts of occurrences, because it doesn't, doesn't happen like that. So you got kids going on other kids' buses all the time. Now, there is a form you can fill out. Now, if that kid is going to get off every single Tuesday at this bus, for this stop, for this reason, you arrange it in the beginning of the year according to your policy, and it's only on that day, and maybe, you know what, maybe we put a bracelet on that kid every Tuesday, so that the bus driver knows, oh, yeah, it's Tuesday, here comes Johnny on my bus today. But on just whatever, I don't think, I don't think it's, there's tolerance for that.
Maybe you didn't understand what I said, but I never said that my child went on another bus, or must I follow the rules. So I followed the rules, and they went on the right bus.
Well, I've done that too. I followed the rules, I've, I put my kids on other buses. Okay. But.
What you just said was, we just lacked basic knowledge.
If my seventy-year-old could get away with it, who says that every ten or eleven-year-old couldn't if they wanted to?
The question, and the question that I have for Jim is, is it true that the student asks the teacher, the teacher allows it without a board? Well, I wasn't there, but I know that an individual was not a normal staff member of the school. And, and so Melissa has addressed the issue by making sure that anybody that is responsible for supervision has the list of rules available to them. And the good thing is, as the year progresses, the substitutes tend to be.
Basically.
But that's, that's an example of tightening up the system that's currently in place to make sure that if that event did occur, or does occur in the future, that a child says, I want to go home on this bus with this person, that everybody that's supervising the subs is well aware of what needs to be replaced in order for that to happen.
I just think it's, Ms. Moreno says herself, way, way harder to go through checks and balances, and, I mean, in this day and age of the, how much technology we have, I mean, I was going to go so far as to say, all right, well, give everybody a bracelet, just like Disney World. You got your, everything's programmed in, what bus you ride, you can change it from day to day, it's on a computer, that way, there's, there's no mistakes, nobody gets on the right bus, that, on the wrong bus is not supposed to get on, that bus, and, you know, it could be for parents picking up kids, it could be for, for everything. I mean, they've got hospital ones, you could just scan it. I don't know how expensive it is to put that kind of system in, but until you do, I just, I just think there's no other way to police it except for, you know, make it a rule that you can't go on somebody else's bus. Parents make their arrangements after school to get their child to where they've got to They can, you know, because I, I've got children in the junior high that, that do after-school sports and after-school activities, and I don't know why, with the late buses they have there, they're not allowed to ride. Why? I'm not sure. So we have to take, in the middle of our day, all the parents, go pick up that child at two thirty or three o'clock when they're done with practice, because they, that child can't, he had a ride home on a bus from a school-sponsored activity. So parents do it.
Okay, um, let's, I've got a second part, but I was, you know, the little, the young, like adult.
The other complication that I received was from a parent who wants us to increase the allow flexibility for approved individuals to pick up elementary school children at dismissal time. Currently, the policy requires that the individual, both through the process, be pre-approved, but that person must be an adult, which they define by policy as age eighteen or older. And the request is to expand the policy to allow an older sibling, not yet eighteen, to be an individual responsible to pick up a younger sibling at the elementary school. And that has been denied based on the policy, and the parent can't understand why a lot of that has happened for him. So, I, I don't, again, I don't have a preference one way or the other, but this is what we get typically, requests for increased flexibility and decreased flexibility to the same policy and rent it there in different areas. We can incorporate whatever changes the committee is interested in making, if any.
Well, I'm definitely definitely opposed to allow.
Well, this is a parent who has a high school child, so let's say you're a, let's say you're a twelfth grader, who has their license, and you have a child in, in Metcalf. So the parent gave permission for this child, the older child to pick up their, their younger child.
I understand.
So the parent's saying, well, I'm the parent, I'm giving you permission, so why can't my older child pick up my younger child?
No.
What's your reason?
Not going there.
Why?
Um.
I mean, I, I see what you're saying.
Well, because what happens, what happens when the underage minor has an automobile accident, and the sibling is now in the car?
The parent?
The parent may have given permission, but it's not going to, it's just going to be more verbal and the loss of kids. No, absolutely not. So, so if all, if all the process, this person is under eighteen, coming to school, pick up the child, and go in the parking lot, we have no idea who else is in the car, they're still on school property, so if they have an accident in the parking lot, we're liable. These, these kids were under childhood for about maybe four months, six months, whatever it is. Just got noise. All right, sorry, again, no. Eighteen, okay, the law says you're an adult. Guys, I, I cannot, I can't, I can't.
Just playing devil's advocate, we have a lot of kids in the senior high that get on at the same time as their siblings in the junior high, and the senior drives, and the other kids jump in the car. And that's, it's happening every day, is what I'm saying. You know, if you have a senior who has a license, and they have younger siblings, there's no good.
But it's an elementary school.
Yeah, they gotta go pick up their five-year-olds.
Just elementary.
All right, I'm just pointing it out that that happens every day now.
Well, that's, that's only, well, it's only because it's an elementary school, they need, they need the pre-approved, maybe on the yellow card, right? Because that was right.
The talk, and asking on the school grounds.
Well, maybe, you know, you can't, but at the same time.
I'm just, just pointing it out.
I don't think we should, I don't think we should have to. And as far as my opinion on the rest of the policy, the policy sufficient as long as the rules follow.
Thank you.
Am I needing any adjustments?
I would say no. I would say no.
Okay. Do we, we have both ways of contesting, right? Yes, I don't have them. Okay. Diane, Cheryl, the, what the, what the policy reads as it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
So you're really keeping the policy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to keep the policy as it is. Okay.
Now, we have policy thirty-two oh eight, budget transfer, on deletion of a policy.
If we take these two in combination and then record separately, the reason why thirty-two oh eight is deleted is because it is incorporated into the new thirty-two oh seven, so it's not legal. Thirty-two oh eight, as previously written, I provided it to you, two paragraphs and thirty of general information. The budget policies that are on the spreadsheet that I've been updating with as we amended the policies over the past several years, there's a chunk of policies related to budget process, and Bob and Tish have long approved these policies and made several recommendations. This is the combination of the new thirty-two oh seven, which we're saying is a new policy, reflects current practices around managing the handles for this budget. And it is very different and much more specific than the policies that previously existed. And the same thing is going to happen in the next round, we have three separate policies currently on the books that will be combined into one, but it's a more comprehensive process of policy that reflects current practice. So basically, the, the change, the changes that are reflected in calling a new policy which it will require a secondary, the next meeting, the changes are just to make sure that reflects updated processes, updated technology, updated checks and balances. This is current practice.
Are we all set with that one?
Okay.
Sorry, we put it on the agenda for the next meeting, but you can, I mean, we can put this one on the agenda as well, you can vote to believe thirty-two oh eight, other than being incorporated into thirty-two oh seven. We do that.
You want to add something? Hang on, do you want to move? Take a moment. Yeah, let's get a little bit. Okay. Hold on, yellow. Okay, I'm finished with this, do we have, have a reserved half of the topic?
Just quickly, the Capitol Project Building, which we met on February fourth, that was during the day, and that was the agenda and the timeframe was set by our friends at Rye. They came down, Joe DeSova, who is the lead architect, engineer, and overseer of school housing, came down with his assistant, Manuel Madero, and we toured, our goal was to tour the whole district, but we toured just the junior, senior high school, and that was a very, it was a good, a good walk-around, a good sense of what we're looking at as far as projects of junior, senior high school. Got a feel for what their expectation is going forward as far as we, as we moved through phase two all the way up into phase four. We touched bases on the projects of the scrutiny at Metcalf, identified that being the emergency generator for the junior, senior high, the Wallow generator, and the lineup school project. So after we did our walk-around, we went back to the admin building, and we had John Rousseau from the town of West Greenwich and James Angie from Exeter Joint. The folks around the table, Phil Pummey and Jeff Bane were present also, who was superintendent. And they just walked us through phase two. Phase two, so it's, it's really one of those, it's like anything, you start at a very high level of like, this is what you're gonna need to do, boom, boom. By the time we left the auditorium, because that was one of the, you know, areas that we had identified, we had rebuilt PIPAC in there, okay? And we're like, good job, Joe, what are you doing? And we were up to two million dollars. What did we have? We had a, we had a green room at one point, you know, you had a black box, you need a black box so that you can practice in. I'm like, good, good. Anyway, you, you put it very nicely when you said we're rebuilding PIPAC, that was, that was. Yeah, correct. And it was all, you need detail, and you're gonna have an acoustician come in, and, so, so that was minute twenty. By minute two hundred and twenty, we were down to, if you can just get schematics roughly drawn out and make sure that you're getting, you know, good dollar values and schematic drawings, you know, we can begin to make decisions on that as we move to phase three, which is really where we went in starting out, like, okay, this is kind of, it's just constantly refining. And I think for the district, the refining is, we, the committee has identified three projects, they, I'm pretty convinced that they're durable current year, and they tend to agree. And why do we say that? They, I'm pretty convinced that they're durable current year, and they tend to agree. And why do we say that? The schematics are already complete for the Wallowen, I mean, for the lineup playground, the egress, and safety issues that need to be addressed over there. Those are in hand. The generator for the junior, senior high school, if going back, those will just need to be revised, so those are in hand. It's really the Wallowen that's the one that Lewis said, that he's aware of that, and he's looking at here and trying that already. So I'm pretty confident we need to check. He walked, Joe walked, Mr. DeSova walked everybody through the process of stage two, and then, which is really, this was the takeaway. A few key items. Don't be afraid to put wish items on there, justify them, don't be frivolous, but justify them. But now that you've done that, this is the caution. If you say you put, we have 2.2 million identified, that we kind of hid in house, that's going to corrode Lewis, but using the 2.2, he said, you should put in 4.4, because you know you're going to do 2.2. As long as you do 50% of your requests, you will not lose your housing. But if you put in 5 million and you only do a million, you generally escape your housing reimbursement, because what they don't want, they want to be able to budget accurately. So the takeaway was, you know, don't be afraid to push on the list, but make sure you're going to be able to get 50% of those things done. And then he addressed, you know, again, they addressed the concept that's near to our heart, you know, that, you know, using a 60% reimbursement rate, if we do a million dollars in year one, so say we had a capital reserve of $1 million, next year we would get back $600,000. The following year we'd get back $360,000. So after one, two, three, four, five years, you're down to $129,000 if at some point we do not ask for additional funds. So the third takeaway was working on that balance between, you know, what are the projects, what are the old projects, what are they going to cost, and there's your funding source coming. And right now, we're not at a bond on any level. However, he did say that you might want to do, as he said, small bonds, because some of the projects may, I mean, I'm being a little facetious, but the P-PAC scenario, there are probably folks in the community who would support, it's like, they just, I mean, the drama, usually, they get behind stuff around, it's awesome, it's great, and they absolutely love this industry, I have to say. They love what we do. They are very proud of the way we take care of our buildings, and they're proud of the way that we're physically responsible, proud of the funding mechanisms.
This is the stager.
This is the stager. It's unbelievable. They give us very, very high hearts, and in particular, since the regionals do much better than.
Then they need to go start.
Of course, can't say.
So, so, and again, the biggie is March 15, the submittal for phase two will be completed on March 15. I asked the architect point blank, do you have enough force power to get it done? He said he does, he absolutely does. So I'm confident that we'll hit that mark, and then it's really, you know, starting to be a stream of business, get some, it's going to be super exciting.
Okay, thank you. So, well, the reports and comments, I think we have some important comments. And we're good, important dates, so what we need, again, on Thursday, visiting towns. And then we have our next meeting on the 23rd, or pledge adoption. Okay, good. To be told in the executive session.
For two minutes, under G.
Appreciation.
And the second.
I can watch and go into executive session, and the P equals 2.65.
Okay. All things, all right.